Good evening. We're at the City Council Chambers, City Hall Council Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today's date is October 12, 2020, and the time is 5:30 PM. Here for a regular City Council meeting. I need to read this notice to the public, that the Mayor and Council welcome comment. From the public during discussion of any of the agenda items, you're required to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three, your remarks to three minutes or less so others may be given the opportunity to speak. Speakers are to speak clearly, direct their comments to the Mayor and Council, not to any Consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those able, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cahill? Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Very good. Okay, and it looks like time for the Mayor, Council, and Administrator comments. Any Consulars have any comments to make tonight?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I hope I'm not the only one that noticed, but the new banners on the viaducts, somebody shake their head at least, let me know I'm not seeing things again.
Yeah.
They look good. I like those. So, are they all up now?
Yes, the banners were for the three different viaducts, and those have all been installed, and there will be a different set installed in the springtime.
Cool. Just want to say, I appreciate that, getting those up after we got the other ones down. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else? Jessica?
No, Your Honor.
Nope. I don't have any tonight either. I've been asked before, soliciting a motion to approve the consent agenda to pull items 11 and 14 from it. With those two items pulled, who would anybody like to move to approve the consent agenda?
I move for approval.
Second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Cahill? Yes. Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question about an item? I don't know if I'm out of order on this or not. I noticed number two on there says, "Approve Tree Trimmer License." Could we just have a refresher of what the tree trimmer license that the city has, what that entails, or what that guarantees our citizens? I've had a number of phone calls of people who have had some difficulties with tree trimmers. So when we approve someone, what does that do for them or for our residents? Is that a fair question to ask right now?
Okay. Your Honor, I do issue those licenses, and they are a protection for the community that we verify their business information, verify they have the proper insurance requirements in order to operate.
Does it provide any recourse for a citizen who feels they were not treated correctly from, in a service?
I would say the recourse is that if any one of you ever wanted to bring back a tree trimmer license to revoke for a specific reason, that that could always happen. But no, there's not any sort of recourse or anything related to that in the ordinance.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. With those two items pulled, then, Madam Clerk, would you read those to us?
Approve Minutes from the September 20th, 2020, and October 5th, 2020 meeting and a bill list of $2,245,464.12. Approve a tree trimmer license for Custom Tree Care, Inc. Approve the Third Quarter Strategic Plan Update. Resolution to approve the facade grant application for Seven Rails Liquor Store at 120 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution accepting contract amendment to Contract 19-CTBF-003, Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program for $500,000 for upper-story housing in the Marshalltown Central Business Resolution authorizing the city to submit an IEDA-CDBG Downtown Revitalization Grant. Resolution approving an agreement for Tobacco Enforcement Services between the City of Marshalltown, Iowa and the Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division, State of Iowa, created pursuant to Chapter 28E.12 of the Iowa Code. Resolution authorizing the City of Marshalltown to submit a grant application to the State of Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, State and Community Highway Safety, Impaired Driving Countermeasures Grant Application, Section 405D, Contract Period October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2021, to address pedestrian safety. Resolution to accept the Iowa DOT Grant Award for Airport Rotating Beacon and Other Improvements for the Marshalltown Municipal Airport in the amount of $120,000. Resolution to approve non-federal reimbursement agreement, A.J.W.-FN-CSA-20-CE-OOXXXX for the Marshalltown Municipal Airport. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the South First Street Parking Lot Stormwater Improvements Project, Number PLT 19001, an increase of $2,677. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the Timber Creek Pedestrian Bridge Project, Number PRK 18001, an increase of $12,500. Resolution accepting the assignment of the Development Agreement for Tax Increment Financing from Flint Hills Holdings Group, LLC to Marshalltown Lofts, LLC.
Very good. Thank you. Then let's go back and revisit item number 11. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess I should have the Clerk read that one as well.
Item number 11, Resolution approving supplemental agreement number two to the agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink for Professional Services for the Edgewood Extension for $471,300.
Okay. The floor is open for discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I ask that this be polled for two reasons. One, I'm still against this project, that it's turning out to be a federally funded driveway for Swifts or JBS. And the second one, I've yet to have anyone come to me and tell me the development on that street, that we're putting it in for nothing. I would like, I guess I'm just still against it until I know that we have some development. I just don't want to see another street that's going to get plowed, taken care of before, you know, we're not hiring any more snowplow drivers, we're not building or buying any more new equipment, but yet we continue to build new roads that, like in this case, I don't know how many years before we see development on it. So, that's the only reason I want it polled, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's go ahead and unmute the mics in case anybody in the public wishes to address it.
The microphones are unmuted, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go 15 seconds. I might have started a little early, but 15 is up. Let's call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And then, let's see, for number 14, since it's off the agenda, just to say off the agenda, or should we solicit?
Correct. It was not for consideration at this Council's, or at this evening's meeting, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Onto item G then, and that is motions. Madam Clerk, when able, what is the first motion?
Approve new Iowa Retail Permit Application for Cigarette, Tobacco, Nicotine, and Vapor through June 30th of 2021 for supermarket Villa Chowato at 107 North Center Street. And SHAG will be moving locations from the mall to 2501 South Center Street B.
Thank you. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved, Your Honor.
Any second?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any discussion? I don't anticipate anybody from the public on that one either, so let's call the roll.
Cahill? Yes. Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto item H of the Agenda Resolutions. And Madam Clerk, what is the first one?
Public Hearing and Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Costs for the East Main Street Drainage Improvement Projects in the City of Marshalltown, Iowa, being Project Number SMW 20004.
Okay. I will declare the public hearing is open, and the time is 5:41. Did the Clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? Yeah, let's unmute.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Any staff review?
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Just a quick refresher that this is a project to improve drainage along East Main Street so that it doesn't turn south on 7th or 8th Avenue and exacerbate flooding problems next to Marshalltown Company. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I do. Justin, thank you. On the background note, as I was just reading it, it mentions there, the project will regrade intersections to prevent overflow of storm waters down 17th Avenue and 18th Avenue.
Ah, that is an error.
It is 7th and 8th. I wanted to verify that.
That is correct.
Okay. And I know that this has been an issue in the past, that the water coming from the hospital down that hill, past Woodbury School, down that way sort of ended up in the area of Marshalltown Company. And we're hoping that this will be the fix to the problem, or at least help us to get through the first stage of it if we can do so.
That's correct. Last year, we had Clapsettle and Garber helpless with a drainage study, and I believe this to be the most cost beneficial improvements that can be made to alleviate street flooding.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other Council comments or questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'm just glad you clarified the avenues, because 17th and 8th didn't make sense to me either.
Yeah, long ways to the east.
I had a question, I had a question for that. So, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay. I'll declare the public hearing is closed, and the time is now 5:43 PM. And I don't think I solicited a motion to approve the resolution, did I?
So move.
Second.
Let's call the roll.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, what is our next item?
Public Hearing and Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Costs for the South 12th Avenue Sidewalk Project in the City of Marshalltown, Iowa, being Project Number TRL 19002.
I declare the public hearing is open. Time's still 5:40, it's 5:44. Just moved. Did the Clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? Let's go ahead and unmute on that one. I don't see anybody rising to speak.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
That's 10 seconds. Everybody think that's enough time? Okay. Good enough. No public comments. Time for staff review again. You just got comfortable.
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Refresher on this project. This is for the construction of a five-foot sidewalk from Anson and 12th Avenue South to the intersection with Olive, although there will be a section left out along the western boundary of the central fairground, Central Iowa Fairgrounds. And then construction of a five-foot sidewalk east from Olive and 12th Avenue to 17th Avenue and Olive, and then again north about a block on 17th Avenue. Again, for the construction of a five-foot sidewalk, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any Council comments?
Justin, can I ask one clarification, please? The five-foot sidewalk requires the homeowner to clear snow removal. Is this correct?
Correct. The city ordinance is written that way for any sidewalk.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, it is.
That it will be the responsibility of the property owner.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Other Council comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Justin, what do you anticipate is a realistic completion date?
Considering that we're this late in the year, realistically, probably this time next year, when we actually get everything all done, and get everything regraded, and seed, and grass growing, probably be this time next year, maybe a little earlier.
Thank you.
The sidewalk's really not going to take that long, but the restoration would hit in the June-July timeframe, and so we'll have to delay it until this time next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Other Consular comments? If not, I will declare the public hearing is closed, and the time is 5:46 PM. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Very good. Roll call.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Next item, please.
Public Hearings and Resolution Approving Amendment Related to the Issuance of General Obligation Corporate Purpose and Refunding Bond Series 2019, with the first item being a public hearing on Amendment to Series 2019 Bond Issuance Resolution for the Dangerous and Dilapidated Building Program.
Very good. I'll declare that the public hearing is open for that now, and the time is 5:47 PM. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? We are unmuted. Very good. Onto staff review.
I'll just do a cursory thing that applies to all of these. We discussed this at a council meeting four weeks ago, and you set the public hearing, three public hearings for these different purposes at the last meeting, and so this is $1.1 million from the 2019 A General Obligation Bond that's being reallocated.
Thank you. Any Council comments? Hearing none. I'll declare that public hearing is closed at 5:48 PM. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Your Honor, just each of the public hearings needs to occur before the actual resolution can be approved, since the resolution is encompassing all three.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go on to the, let's have the public hearing open for the second one then, which is, public hearing on Amendment to Series 2019 Bond Issuance Resolution for the Repaving Trails Project. And that public hearing is open now at 5:49 PM. Did the Clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public comments? 10 it is. And staff review on this one?
The same, Your Honor, unless there's any questions that you would have.
Sure. Any Council comments? All right. The public hearing is closed at 5:49 PM. Let's go on to the third one. Madam Clerk, would you tell us what that one is?
Public Hearing on Amendment to Series 2019 Bond Issuance Resolution for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum Project.
Very good. And I'll declare the public hearing is open on that one at 5:50 PM. Did you receive any written comments to the Clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. We'll start the watch again. 10 it is. And staff review is the same on this one, I assume?
Correct, Your Honor.
Let's ask for any Council comments on this one. Hearing crickets only. Let's declare the public hearing is closed at 5:51 PM, and go on to the next item.
Resolution approving Amendment Related to the Issuance of General Obligation Corporate Purpose and Refunding Bond Series 2019.
Thank you. That public hearing is open now at 5:51 PM. I'm sorry. I missed that.
This is the resolution to consider the actions now that all three public hearings have been held.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Your Honor, I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I guess we've already had discussion. Let's call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay. That carried as well. Onto item I, which is ordinances, and we have just one of those, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing on Ordinance 15003, Approving the Rezoning of City Property Along East Southridge Road to R2A Low Density Residential.
And we'll declare that public hearing is open at 5:52 PM. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Any public comments?
The lines are unmuted.
10 seconds is up. Staff review.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We talked about this at your last meeting. This is a rezoning of the small portion on the west end of the property along Southridge that the city owns and is preparing to sell. And so right now, it is currently zoned PUD. We are proposing to rezone to the R2A to match the adjacent property along Southridge, so that that can all be included as one development with the same regulations. So we did have a public hearing and conversation with the Plan Zoning Commission. They recommended approval. We had the first reading. We're having the public hearing here at your second reading, with the request that the third reading be waived and that be considered, so that we can continue through the process in helping to meet the due diligence period.
Council comments? That public hearing is closed now at 5:53 PM. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance and to waive the third reading?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second, Your Honor.
Very good. Roll call.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well. Onto item J, Discussion Items, the first one of which is Discussion of the McFarland Clinic New Facility Project.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I'll get some introduction here, and then have Deb and Roger from McFarland Clinic stand up and give you a presentation about a new facility that they have proposed for Marshalltown. It was in, about this time last year, when Deb came to meet with Michelle and I and asked if there are some locations that they should be looking at besides the list of ones that they had, and that's when we pointed out that there would be some land opening up on East Merrill Hibbs as the East Merrill Hibbs Project moved forward. And so that was on their radar, and then it came back kind of the end of October, that that was definitely a place that they were interested in. And so we've been going along here, having some conversations that were slowed down a little bit by COVID, but we re-engaged here recently. And so this is a very large project, and the way that I looked at how the Council might consider some incentives for this was really looking at the detail of the tax abatements. A three-year, 100 tax abatement is something that you all seem very comfortable with. And so knowing this is not in an urban revitalization area where that tax abatement is available, how would that transition into a rebate for incremental taxes over time? And so we can definitely get more into that detail there at the end, but first, we definitely like them to present this project, and I hope that you will find it to be a very great project that's going to help our community continue to grow and advance. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Deb.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to present our project to you and answer any questions that you might have. My name is Deb Wallam, and I'm the Executive Director for the McFarland Clinic Offices here in Marshalltown. I moved here to Marshalltown in 1982, when I came here to attend Nursing School at the Marshalltown Community School of District, Community School of Nursing, and have worked for McFarland since 1985, or parts of McFarland, and the physicians that have practiced here when I began my career with Dr. Jebson in 1985. Thank you.
I'm Roger Kleister. My title is Chief Operating Officer, McFarland. I came to McFarland in January of 1988, so I've been there a little over 32 years. Basically serve as Assistant Administrator of the organization and deal with, as my title implies, the operations, facilities, ancillaries, the clinical areas. And I live in Ames and work in the Ames Office.
And before we start with our presentation, I just want to mention that we have Dr. Colette Lothe, one of our pediatricians, here in the audience with us. I'm Dr. Joseph Polpeter, in our Family Medicine Department also. And then I just might mention that several physicians and our Chief Executive Officer is attending with us virtually. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We're very excited to present the project that we've been working on for some time. As we start, we'd just like to share with you that the mission of McFarland Clinic is we care for people, and our vision is we will be the trusted choice for enhancing the health and well-being of our communities. Almost 75 years ago, our founders began one of Iowa's first physician-owned clinics, and today, we're one of the largest in Iowa. We have over 280 providers, over 1,000 staff members, and represent about a million visits across the organization. So a little bit about McFarland Clinic, Marshalltown. We are in three locations. We occupy 312 East Main Street, the 303 Nicholas Drive Buildings, and then we are also in the Express Care at the Hy-Vee at 802 South Center. We do currently lease the 312 East Main and the 303 Nicholas Drive Buildings from Unity Point Health. We currently have 30 physicians and advanced practice providers. Those are nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, and physical therapists. We have 130 employees. We have visiting specialists. Each month, we have about 26 different physicians and APPs that travel to Marshalltown, and they represent 14 different specialties. These, on any given day in Marshalltown, we can have up to four of them here providing that care, and we think that's very important because it allows our community to be able to seek their care locally. We also have ancillary services such as lab and imaging services. Just a glance at 2019 visits, we had over 101,000 provider visits in Marshalltown. We had almost 60,000 ancillary visits, and over 13,500 visits provided by our specialist and our oncology physicians. So, what brings us here this evening? In February 2019, Marshalltown Facilities Committee was formed to address the long-term facility needs that we have in Marshalltown. And so And so the members that are shown, that committee are shown on the slide before you. The late Eric, Dr. Eric Close, Malia Jensen, one of our physicians assistants from Family Medicine, Dr. Laura Lasik from Family Medicine, Dr. Colette Lothe, Pediatrics, Dr. Joseph Polpeter, Family Medicine, Dr. Wilson, General Surgery, Ron Franzen is the Executive Director of Facilities for McFarland Clinic, Roger and myself. Some of the key drivers for our project were our lease expirations. I already mentioned that we leased the two main facilities from the hospital, the hospital relocation, and significant deferred maintenance on the current buildings.
Thought I'd walk you through what brought us here tonight, some of the major milestones in this process. Once we put that committee together, and again, we're physician-owned and governed, and so actually, Dr. Wilson sits on our major board of directors, Dr. Polpeter sits on the committee, Dr. Colette Lothe is very engaged, and so that physician group was formed to really see, given those drivers, what can we, what do we need to do in the long term here? What can we think of a long game? And so it started with us really looking at potential locations in the community. Included in that was an evaluation of the current location as well. And I think that original list had maybe 10 or 12 parcels on it, different properties around the community. And it was during that time, we were engaged in conversations with Michelle and Jessica about what that opportunity presented, the location we settled on, but also trying to vet what the other opportunities were in the community. And we had various criteria to look at. We wanted to make sure we had something that's on a major arterial. We wanted it to be located proximal as we could to the hospital, not necessarily next to it, but close enough because our physicians do provide services there, particularly general surgery and podiatry doing surgeries there and some other services that we tend to there. And so we identified a preferred parcel as a committee, had those meetings with the administration along the way, and we initiated design and the engineering process enough to get us to a cost estimate because we ultimately want to build a financial model surrounding this thing. And so we, what we call the schematic design phase. It's not blueprints, but it's clearly just schematics. And so we proceeded to get enough of that done to get a professional project cost estimate made. And as most projects happen like this, our appetite was bigger than our wallet, and we had to go back and relook at it and say, what are our priorities? Did a lot of work with the departments there, and it's a lot of iterative process where we meet with each department, the physicians, the staff, representatives, and came up with a cost estimate that we then brought forth to our own governing bodies, our finance committee, our board of directors, and came up with basically three approvals. One, let's go ahead and pursue the parcel of land that we were interested in. Two, to really complete enough architectural design and engineering to get this project out to bid. Because up to this point, it's all estimates, right? And as you know, this, the bidding climate got kind of crazy during this pandemic, and so we felt we at least need to get to that bid stage to really know we have a project. And the third piece was what we're here to discuss about tonight, and that's what type of financial opportunities are available by the community, whether it be tax abatement, TIF programs, to provide funds into the project that makes it really feasible. So really, there's two processes going on right now for as this project goes, and it's really, we need to see them both successfully play out to, so to speak, get the plane off the ground, to really launch this project. And that is to get this project out to bid to general contractors, and we'd like to do that by January because that's when we get real hard numbers. We get commitments from a contractor to take on a project of this size. And secondly, to bring this discussion concerning a potential for tax incremental finance and that process that evidently starts tonight with discussing with council and starting those wheels in motion. And so we did, as Deb mentioned, we did run into a little hiccup. COVID really affected us pretty significantly as, not only as a business, but as a healthcare provider. And from March until the beginning of July, we basically put a lot of our planning on hold as we were recalibrating to operate in this pandemic world, which we feel very comfortable where our operations are now, but we did put a lot of these type projects on hold. That's when we really started back up and re-engaged Jessica and Michelle, or we probably would have been before you earlier than that. So that's what brings us here tonight, and I can go back later during questioning and give detail any of these major milestones because there's a lot of detail behind every one of them. But that's basically what brought us before you tonight as a planning group. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Deb go through the details of the project because you get to see the scope of it. And I said, we can come back and revisit this because I think there's some details that you may have questions on, some of that vetting we did.
Okay. Yes, I am shorter, Gary. So this is a map just showing our current three locations, the 312 East Main, the express care at the Hy-Vee, and our south side, or 303 Nicholas Drive, and then the new building site. So we'll talk about the exciting part. So I'll just show you, if I can get this cursor to move around. So this, oh, that's not working great, but this nine acre. Mouse isn't going to allow me to show you, but the nine acre, oh, down here it will. Okay. This nine acres is the parcel that we are interested in and in the process of purchasing. You can see that the building lays out in the middle of this, the space. We would have parking both on the east and the west, some parking on the north. And then I'll just call out to you that this dotted line right here represents a pathway for growth. So should we need to expand in the future, you know, beyond the building that we're currently planning today, that we would have adequate space to do that?
Maybe I'd comment a couple of things on that too, Deb. As we looked at this parcel, there were a couple of things that were kind of intriguing about it. It does sit on a hillside, and a lot of projects steer where from hills, right? You want to be on a nice level area. What we see is having a major entrance both on the east and west, and actually, if you think of a walkout basement kind of scenario. However, this on the east side would be totally exposed on three levels. And we would have a patient entrance on the garden level, we're calling that area, and then up on the next floor on the east side. Also, the original discussion was for a smaller parcel, but as we looked at the potential extension of the road to the south someday, that that would allow us potential access to that as well. At this point, we're not contemplating it, but anytime we do a facility, we like to say, what Deb referred to as our pathway to growth, you know, where do we go? And it may not be in any of our lifetimes, but where the future generations would say, oh, thank goodness that they did allow with some vision of how to expand. And we would see that building naturally expanding to the south, and then as the community develops further the road on the south, we would have a connecting parts, arterial there, basically. So there was just some attributes about the site itself that intrigued us, and then, of course, being on the new road that links right into a major north-south arterial in the community.
We'll briefly just show you high-level, the floor plan. So Roger already mentioned that this would be a three-floor development. This is the first floor. On the first floor, you would find the main entrance being to the west, or off of the west, our surgical specialties, general surgery, podiatry.
You have garden up there now, Deb.
Oh, do I have garden? Oh, that's, oh, so sorry. Thank you, Roger, for that correction. So we're on the garden level. Garden level is, the entrance is on the east, and the Pediatrics Department will be on the garden level. The Physical Therapy Department will be there as well. Some of our imaging services, such as CT and MRI, will be on that level. I'd also like to mention that next to the Pediatrics Department, we have space developed for the OB-GYN department. We currently have some nurse midwives coming to Marshalltown to provide prenatal care. We intend to not only continue that service, but to grow that service line. We also have two obstetricians that come two days a month to provide other gynecological types of services and procedures. Okay, now, I'm on the first floor. So the first floor is the, so the entrance would be off of the west on the first floor. Surgical specialties, so general surgery, podiatry, will be on this floor. We are, we do have an open recruitment for orthopedic surgery, and we do intend to continue to pursue that service line. We, you will notice on this corner, we do have space that we plan to lease to a pharmacy. You can see that off, on this corner, we have a drive-through planned for that space. Down here, we would have the optical department. I already mentioned, the surgical suite would be here. And then most of this area down here is planned for our oncology services. So today, we have oncologists in Marshalltown two days a week. Previous to this past year, we had services from oncology up to four days a week. There's been some change in regulation for what are required to deliver certain medications or certain chemotherapy agents that required a significant building enhancement that we elected not to do in this current building. We do intend to be able to do that in the new building and then grow that service line back to four full days a week, where we will be able, where our oncologists will be in Marshalltown and providing that chemotherapy service. So this is a nice wing on this floor for those services. And next is the second floor. So the Family Medicine Department will occupy the majority of this floor. We will also have some surgical specialties traveling from our Ames location on this floor. Our Family Medicine Department is currently staffed with 12 providers, physicians, nurse practitioners, and physicians assistants, and this floor would allow room for 16. This slide shows you a view from the northwest and from the southeast. So Roger, you want to?
Yeah, maybe I'll talk a little bit about this. That top view, it kind of, this is where it kind of gets exciting. You really get to sense the mass of this facility. Each floor is about 22,000 square feet, give or take. We're still refining some of that. And so this is looking from that northwest angle where the new road starts to go in, and that's where you'll see the drive-up and entries there. And again, the pharmacy's there to the left, the optical to the right. The lower level is looking at it from the southeast. And so where Deb has the cursor there, right there, that oncology suite she talked about, that'd be our infusion area. And you'll see that entrance down there, right off there. There'll be somewhat, there'll be a canopy of some sort coming out there. We just haven't put some of those details on this. But it gives you a real sense of how we're using the hillside to build this building into it, and there's actually patient access at two different levels. And then there'll be a major circulation stairway that runs through the middle with elevators, of course. But it gives you a sense of the scope of what this facility starts to look like sitting on that parcel. The quote dotted line would come off to the left there, where Deb's cursor is up here, where we could expand the building out to the south. And we're going to put services inside and construct it so someday, someone won't be totally angry at us for not thinking about that. At least we'll try to anticipate as much as we can there.
Okay. So I'm going to just go through a few of the benefits that we see of a new facility here in Marshalltown. First of all, some location benefits, proximity to the new hospital, which we've already mentioned, and the combining of the Main Street and Nicholas Drive offices, the services that are provided at those two sites. I might just note that we do intend to keep our express care services at the Hy-Vee, so we will technically be in two locations. Efficiency and accessibility, improved office configuration and efficiencies. Couple of things that we alluded to in the previous part of the presentation was that we would be integrating our specialty services into the practices that currently practice here full-time in Marshalltown. A couple of the other things that come to mind when we are thinking about this is just, just the configuration of the space. When we built the buildings that we're currently in with the hospital, you know, that was many years ago, and we did not have a lot of technology. We did not have computers in every exam room. And Roger and I were talking late last week, and, you know, we're also talking about how we had a lot of medical records and paper. And so we had, a lot of the space in the building was for just plain charts, paper. And so many things that have changed over the last 20, 30 years. So this new facility will allow us to configure that space and be much more efficient. We would, facility ownership is a benefit to us. Modern mechanical systems that will have some energy efficiencies, our expanded oncology infusion services, which I've already mentioned, accessibility or more accessibility to our physical therapy services that will be very easy to get to and visible to our patients, and then the pharmacy drive-up services that we mentioned. We believe in the area of growth, that the benefits are physician and provider recruitment. We believe that a new facility and continued growth of services will align us better for physician recruitment. We do plan to grow. So we plan to grow our Family Medicine Department, really any of the local departments. We would like to continue to expand our outreach services, and so just in general, the new facility will allow for that growth. And then I, as a Chamber of Commerce board member, just would like to call out that we've, I feel that this supports one of the goals of removing barriers to the community for growth. And so we believe that providing, continuing to provide and growing the service line in the healthcare arena for this community will benefit and support that chamber growth goal. So I'll share with you our timeline. So in the next few months, we'll be just working on completing the plan development, so the design, architectural, and engineering work that we'll need to do in order to take the project out for a competitive bid, and then to secure our financial packaging, which again is a big reason of why we're here this evening. In January, we plan to have that ready to go out to bid with the assignment of the general contractor by February or March in 2021, with groundbreaking in April of 2021, and a very aggressive timeline of having a summer 2022 move in.
So just to wrap it up, what we see, and kind of use, Jessica and Michelle helped us on the city processes, but we'd like to figure out the finalization on what the city brings forth, and then we realize that requires some different accomplishments here at the city level. One is the amendment of the urban renewal plan, complete a development agreement, that process, and then execute those final agreements. And again, we've relied on Michelle and Jessica to help us on understanding what those timelines are and if it's achievable, and recognize there's, you have very defined processes to go through there, like you have on previous agenda items tonight, public hearings, and you obviously want to dialogue with the community about the project of this scope. And so we're here to say, we're here for that process. We'll do what we need to do to provide information to you, provide information to the community, to help you make an informed decision about this. But as we're doing that process with the city, we will be really working diligently on the plans and the engineering and architectural to get this thing up to the bid point following the holidays, basically. So that can open up for questions. We can flip back to one of the previous slides or something if you want to point to something there or navigate away back to.
Any questions or comments from the council? I will say this, that when this idea was first incubated, the council did not get much notice of what was going to happen. And on a leap of faith, I really appreciate the fact that this council bought into it, knew it was going to be a big economic development driver for Marshalltown, and that's how we got the road put in there. So it's been fun to watch and fun to watch you guys come back to us with putting this into fruition. But I sensed somebody was going to say something.
Oh, I just wanted to say that my family really appreciates McFarland and the wonderful providers we've had, my kids, my My kids, my parents, all of us have had wonderful experiences here and in Ames too. And just want to say thank you for that. I'm excited about the new building. I think it'll be great to have all of you together. It's not easy to work from two different locations and then with the hospital in the mix also. So that'll be great. And then, I forgot my last point, but it's not a big deal. Just looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Your honor, I would like to commend McFarland's commitment to our community. I think that in the last 10 years, we've had some concerns about where our healthcare industry was going. And so we do appreciate the commitment to the community. I know, I think when we met previously, I expressed my concern over a couple of areas. One being that the north side of town is, again, we're fewer services in that facility. But then, as Mr. Thompson stated, that really it's about seven minutes to get from one end of town to the other. So maybe that's something that I can overcome a little bit. The other was continuing to offer services and expanding your services is something that I would really hope that we can do. I am very concerned that we do not have full-time OB-GYN services in our community. We know economically to bring young families to come and be, whether they are teachers or nurses or welders or whatever, engineers, whatever, to come to be in our community and buy into our community, they want to have those services available to them and not have to leave the community to go do that. So I would continue to push, and I, we had a good discussion on this, continue to push that that is a priority. I know that it's difficult, but I don't think it's impossible. And I would continue that for Marshalltown to grow, we need to have those services to be as appealing to folks as we can be. Thank you very much.
Some of the comments we made during, we had that discussion about all week, because it's obvious on our minds as well. And we haven't, McFarland hasn't been in the delivery business in Marshalltown for decades, I think. Dr. Pulte, you're probably predating your arrival, maybe, I think. And recruitment's very difficult. What we do provide is to bring the prenatal care here, at least. We have midwives, and they work closely with our physicians. And to continue to grow that prenatal and postnatal, because now the hospital doesn't have a delivery unit that even if we would magically resurrect obstetricians tomorrow or family practitioners could deliver, we just couldn't deliver the babies. At this point, we see a real need to at least make sure we get, I call them the tummy checks, all the prenatal visits coming in and the postnatal. And I guess over the long run, would it be possible to build that to the point where it really, you could demonstrate, you know, a viable practice? And a lot of it comes down to this call issue. I mean, it's really tough to recruit a physician or a midwife into where you guarantee it on call every other night, every weekend for the rest of your career. It's very, it's a big encumbrance on personal lives. And so, as Deb described that, what we see is having that strong outpatient presence to get those visits in. And unfortunately, that delivery, it's out of town. And we don't think that's ideal either, believe me. I think you had commented, will someone be, would a baby be born somewhere between Ames and Marshalltown or Des Moines and Marshalltown? And of course, none of us would like to think about that happening. But I think we had a good dialogue about it, and we recognize it's in need of the community. It's just, it's just been a very difficult recruit for the community at large. And our goal is to at least, we know we can provide good outpatient prenatal care, postnatal visits, and then buddy it right up next to pediatricians there, because there's a real quick and easy handoff there for those families.
Thank you.
Very good. Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you both and the doctors that were involved in our small group presentations that you gave us. You answered a lot of our questions then. So I don't want the public to think that we're not interested in not asking questions. I know a lot of us had those questions answered previously. I'll just echo what was said. Healthcare is important to this town. Town of 27,000 needs doctors, needs, we all know that. But like I told you to, I will fight until the ribbon is cut to get you downtown. But I do support this, and thank you very much. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your honor?
Mr. Martin?
I've been, my family's been in the community for 50 years, and I've seen the ups and downs of the hospital and the services. And I've used McFarland Clinic and the hospital. And I'm excited to see the planning and thought going into the project. I, it's really a lynch for the city of Marshalltown and its surrounding populations. And I'm pleased that a lot of work continues in this vein. And I'm very hopeful and supportive of the program going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I'll, I'll kind of take back over again and pull up the memo that I had included in the packet here so that we can kind of talk about what we need your authorization for here at this point. So I kind of put together a little bit of a timeline here, as well as then included the schedule for kind of how we looked at what happens when you take tax abatement and put it into a TIF format, because that's really what's available, as well as then start to look at what that looks like over time. And so as we started to talk through some different examples and things, ultimately what we came to was a 50% rebate of incremental taxes over a 10-year period. And with that, it does have a fairly big, what I call a fairly big not to exceed number, because there's a fairly big assumed assessed value, or yeah, assessed value here, of 2.4 million. So what happens over 10 years of time is that there will be new assessments on the property for assessed value. And so, my formula doesn't take that into consideration. I don't like to muck it up with things, but we just know that's going to happen. And so this 10-year, 50%, not to exceed 2.4 million, really allows McFarland to have the capacity to be able to take advantage of those increases in their assessed value over time. To kind of go back up and to go back to the schedule of what would need to happen, they did a very good job of mentioning that we need to amend the urban renewal plan, which does have a few different steps of setting a public hearing, basically waiting 30 days and then holding that public hearing with the consultation with our local government entities in the middle of that. And then happening kind of either at this, concurrently towards the end of the process or after that process has been completed, is the consideration of the development agreement for the rebate of incremental taxes for 50%, 10 years, not to exceed 2.4 million. And so if you overlap sort of the approval of a plan that has the specific incentive stated on November 23rd with a resolution to set the public hearing for a development agreement on November 23rd, which is just a two-week waiting period, then basically you have, that we could accomplish this before December 14th. If you would bump it back a week, then it's still accomplished potentially by the end of the year, less any unforeseen hurdles. So tonight, and this aligns with their timeline of being able to start get some pricing and things in January and knowing that they'd have a commitment there. So what I'm looking for from you tonight is basically some authorization to move forward with getting the urban renewal plan amendment started and really getting this process moved forward to bring back those necessary steps to you for further consideration.
I haven't called for a public discussion yet, but let's see if anybody is willing to do a motion to have the staff proceed in that direction.
I vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we've had enough discussion up here, but we haven't really opened it up to the public, so let me do that now.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So maybe when you discuss this TIF agreement, you could display to the public what each taxing entity's commitment is to this. Because we know it's not just all coming out of the city's pocket. It's gonna come out of the school system, which is having a huge financial problem and a huge problem recruiting teachers. So it'd be nice to see a whole breakout. You have a forum for that. I've seen it before, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else standing, so let's open the mics.
The microphones are open, your honor.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yep.
Isom?
Yes.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. The staff has instruction. Thanks again to everybody from McFarland. It's pretty exciting to have a new hospital and a new medical clinic of this ilk in town here. It is gonna help grow this town. Thanks. And I'm always, I don't want to chase people out of here, but once you've presented, you really don't have to stick around for the rest of it, so feel free, feel free to leave if you like.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, on to the next discussion item. And that's the request for city participation in new homebuyer incentives.
Do you want me to give an intro first, or? Okay, well, Joe is here before you again on behalf of the chamber. We discussed the presentation at the last meeting and really talked about how the chamber has put $250,000 in and for 100 homes to be built and that they're looking for others to match that. And so, I did, knowing that we had two items on the agenda that were related to local option sales tax, as I am proposing that we would use the council-designated local option sales tax for this, I did give you all the summary that was in the September 14th packet that Diana had handed out so that you could see. She had put on the bottom sort of that $500,000 item that was on the consent agenda. And so, I wanted you to kind of see what we've been looking at at revenue over the last two years so that you could have a comfort level with where this could go.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Jessica. My name is Joe Carter. I'm a 25-year resident of Marshalltown, living at 610 Elmwood Drive. Thank you again for the opportunity to address the city council this evening. Tonight, I am representing, as Jessica said, representing the chamber as the vice chairman. And as my first slide might mention, I'm back. The last time I was here, I reviewed the McClure Housing Strategy Proposal, of which you paid for half of that proposal. That night, we didn't have the full report to you, but each of you should have received it shortly after the last council meeting. So if you'd go to slide two. To recap the report, I'm really just gonna focus on the incentives. McClure is proposing two types of incentives. The first incentive is for the builders. We develop, and we, meaning really the chamber, our community development foundation, would develop, be the developer. So the first incentive is for the builders. So we develop the lots and then offer those lots to builders at reduced rates. Plus, we don't ask the builder to pay for the lot until the home is built and sold. So that's the first part of the proposal. And then if we go to the last slide, which is really the one that's important for this meeting, is that second type of incentive that McClure proposes is for the home buyer. McClure recommends a $10,000 cash incentive for the buyer. It's one of the things that we've seen over and over again at the other communities. They're trying to do this type of thing to draw home buyers to the area. This would be in lieu of tax abatement, that $10,000 home buyer incentive. The chamber board, as Jessica did mention earlier, has already approved to fund $2,500 per home up to 100 homes, up to 100 homes, sorry, under this program. We wanted to give you the past two weeks to look at the McClure Housing Strategy Proposal before we came back to you. So, now we're asking if you'd be willing to join the chamber, once again, join us and approve to fund this home buyer incentive at $25 per home up to 100 homes. So I'll take whatever questions you've got, but the biggest question up there is, are you in?
How much, how much per home, Joe?
$2,500 per home.
Twenty-five, a hundred.
What did I say?
Twenty-five.
I'm like, I'm in.
We're in.
Oh, don't sell me short, Mr. Thompson.
Could we replay that real quick and show what he asked for?
Twenty-five, $2,500, sorry about that.
Or comments?
Your honor, since I beat you up already, Joe. So you're saying McClure and you agree, 10,000, it's gonna take $10,000 plus our existing three-year tax abatement.
In lieu of.
You're saying do away with it.
Yeah, it would be in lieu of. So if the buyer takes advantage of the home buyer incentive of $10,000 on their home, there would be no tax abatement.
But you're telling us, your suggestion is leave the tax abatement for those owners that want to do that? Are you throwing out two options or just, are you asking us to do away with the tax abatement and go to this 100%?
Really just asking you to go to this as an option. If a buyer wanted to take advantage of tax abatement, they have that available to them. It's there. If you want, if you want to do something different than that, certainly that's, but this would be in lieu of. So a buyer, interestingly enough, if I'm a buyer and I build a $250,000 home, highly likely that I'm going to get more money back in tax abatement dollars than I would in this $10,000. But what we've learned through this and the study that McClure has done is, is that most buyers want that now. They want their $10,000 now, they don't want to wait, and they want to use it in many instances as their, as part of their down payment. Or maybe it pays for the new sofa and the couch or the chairs and the bed. I don't know what it's gonna pay for, but it's gonna pay for money now. So I would leave both options out there. That way, if somebody wants to do something different, but we believe we need the $10,000 as an incentive to bring more home buyers to this community. Hope that answers the question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
But they only get one or the other. They don't get both.
Everybody heard you right when you said that, in lieu of.
In lieu of.
That's why I want to make sure.
Yep, 100%. I messed up the 25. It's 2,500.
Hundred dollars doesn't buy much of a couch, Joe.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
You bet. Anyone else?
Joe, I just want to clarify again. Number one, thank you for coming. Secondly, is there any limit on the home value? Does it have to be a home over $150,000 or?
Has to be a home over $180,000, which we think is very realistic from what the home builders have told McClure, what they've told them. $180,000 would be our minimum dollar level to purchase a home. And then there is no cap to that. If somebody wants to build a million-dollar home, we're all in for that.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? I watched from afar my hometown do this. Spencer, Iowa, did a $10,000 per new home purchase, and it was wildly successful. So the same developer that started it went and did the second whole set of housing and then did the third whole set of housing. So it really did increase the population, and it got people living in town and commuting less.
Great, great statistics in the McClure study and the proposal that they did, showing some of that within a number of different communities.
Your honor, may I ask one more question? Following up on Sue's comment, Joe. So if we stipulated that there was no minimum, are you saying that the chamber would back out then? If we said it was, you know, because at first, let me back up. At first, I was thinking, you know, we're putting the cart before the horse here. We'd do away with the tax abatement, and then the taxing entities would be able to get their money right away, which would help the city. You know, we wouldn't have this, this 100 homes being built or 1,000 homes or whatever. You know, we would capitalize on that, you know, the second year down the road. And this would replace that. I don't like the idea, if we're in the process of changing our zoning ordinances, we're putting a request out for bid, and we're gonna look at, you know, the pocket neighborhoods, the tiny homes and things. Now you've just eliminated any potential incentives unless we keep the tax abatement for anybody north of the tracks. No one's gonna build a $180,000 home in First Ward. So I guess, now I'm leaning towards, we needed to keep the tax abatement in, you know, what you said earlier, in effect for those that can't afford a $180,000 new home or choose to go the smaller route, and then keep this in effect. So I guess, unless we can do this to where we eliminate, we can go to this entirely and eliminate the... and eliminate the McClure's recommendation of 180. So are you telling us the chamber is out of that then, if we go that?
Well, that wasn't a discussion point that the chamber had specifically, that question getting brought up.
So you can't answer that then.
So I don't think I can answer that for the chamber as to how the chamber would respond. But the idea to have the $180,000 as a, as a floor, you know, is to try and get as much assessed value, get more, you know, higher property taxes, and so that's really what we're looking to do. But because you leave the abatement, I mean, as you already mentioned, there are incentives then for that level. But what we're trying to do out of this is to get a higher-end home built so that it adds more to the tax rolls.
But understand, any building on a vacant lot adds to the tax rolls.
Absolutely right. But the bigger it is, the more it's assessed for, the bigger the tax rolls, and the more we like that.
And do we tax your business enough?
Yes, you do, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Joe, I just have one more. This may have just gone over my head again, just want to clarify. This is not on the purchase of a pre-existing home, only on a new build.
Correct.
Is this correct?
You are 100% right, counselor.
Just want to verify.
So what I'm looking for is basically, like we did at the last meeting with the downtown revitalization grant, that we need a resolution to designate these funds, if you would like to do that. So I'd be looking for a motion to have a resolution come before the next meeting to designate local option sales tax for this purpose.
Your Honor?
Well, I guess, Jessica, my question is, if we, again, are we getting the cart before the horse? You know, McClure's suggesting 10,000. If we go forward with this, we're only at 5,000.
Correct. And I think, you know, I don't want to put words in Joe's mouth, but you can see that there's other requests up there that, you know, this is, it's a city, it's a city program, basically, is what's being proposed here initially, that, you know, this is something I think that it's a, it's an important step for us to partner with the chamber and be one of the first in with the chamber, allowing, rather than allowing others to fill that void first, I think.
I have another question, and this builds upon what Mr. Thompson said and the cap of 180. Mr. Thompson said, you know, it might, we have a lot of vacant lots north of Main Street. Is there a way to put either a proportional, the 180,000 qualifies for $10,000, but maybe 120 qualifies for 60 or some percentage of that? Because I guess that I would encourage, we, we have these vacant lots, we want to encourage people to build and to improve our neighborhoods in all parts of the city. But again, it may require a different type of housing than it would in a, a neighborhood on the southern side of town with large lots, et cetera. So I don't know if that's something that the chamber or this process would consider to make it more attractive to those, you know, and again, maybe the 180 is the base, and that's the 100, that's the 10,000, but, and a minimum would be 100,000 or something, an idea. Like I said, I don't even know if you can build a house for 100,000, but maybe. No, Terry's back there saying, no, no. But I would just like it to also be able to be part of a reach for more people in our community.
Your Honor, Jessica, legally, building again on this, what Sue said, that if we left the three-year tax abatement in process, we can't front that money to a home builder and then collect it back?
Do you, okay, you mean front the tax abatement to, so we'd be fronting it to a buyer, because it's ultimately the buyer who sees that.
Can we front it, and then, then they wouldn't have a tax?
And depending on the value of the house, it's, we pay more in a, or we, we would be paying more than $10,000 in a three-year tax abatement scenario than we would otherwise. So I don't know that fronting it is a financial benefit for us. As, as Joe built on, really, this is giving somebody the option of, you know, I want cash upfront versus waiting for a reward in three years, you know, and realizing the maximum benefit there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just brainstorming here, thinking how we accomplish everything we want to on the north side of town.
So I, I would say, and this goes back to what was in the study, that really, the study was looking at, if, if we consider using tax increment financing to reimburse a developer for the infrastructure expenses, 40% of that payment has to be set aside for low to moderate income housing. And so that's really where I think you would be able to potentially subsidize a, a family looking to build a home on the north side or somebody, somewhere else that was income qualifying at a higher level than $10,000 per home. And so that money only, also, it's the city's money, the LMI dollars. You have the ability to determine what that looks like when you have it. It just takes a little bit of time because of the way our tax cycle works and being delayed, you know, 18 months before you get there. And so I think that's really where the whole housing strategy comes together, but we're only talking about one piece of it now, which is you need those $180,000-plus houses to be built right away in order for, you know, things to start happening on the back end, which allow for the redevelopment of the north side of the community.
And then legally, we can have a, a three-year tax abatement on residential new construction citywide and have it, you know, or, and as an option, we can have the 10,000 cash advance?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's possible. So basically, that would be something where, we've talked about the chamber would be administering this, and for somebody to accept that, they would be signing an authorization that would waive their rights to apply for the tax abatement. And so ultimately, when those tax abatement applications were turned in, they, we would have copies of that paperwork where they'd said they, they were waiving that right to apply for it.
Roger, you agree with that?
Well, the waiver of the right to apply for it, I mean, we, we've made it a part of our program, but if they've signed a waiver to apply for it, they've taken themselves out of that.
Okay.
So there's, there's a, this is, and that's where this really keeps going as a partnership between the chamber and the city, because there has to be ongoing communication as this process would be implemented to make sure that when something happens, you know, it's generally probably a close timeline of when somebody would turn in an application to when they'd be getting that incentive at the end of the process at their closing. So, but it's, it's completely possible. But this is just one piece of a larger strategy that was really presented in the report.
Your Honor, do we have a motion yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so I move that we join forces and see how this way works, and maybe we can expand it in the future.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? Probably other. I'm sorry?
Your Honor, Bill Martin.
Yes, sir.
Applaud the chamber for leadership and for you and Jessica for a very adequate explanation of another option for future home. I think we need some balance in all that we do, but I think there is a need for mid-level or higher housing development. Right now, developers are reluctant to come to the community for these types of projects. And I think, Mr. Mayor, your experience in your hometown bodes well for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open this one up to the public, too.
The lines are unmuted.
Okay, you can mute the lines, but public comment can ensue.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Does this $10,000 gift apply to people who are existing residents who build a new house and move up and abandon the existing? Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Let's build some houses, yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, staff has direction on that one, and then we're down to the third and final discussion item, which is the request to dispose of city-owned vacant lots.
Yes, we had a lot of cleanup following the derachio on some of our city-owned lots, and, and these, there's a reason to bring things forward now to try and get them off of, back on the tax rolls and sort of out of our, our care here. And so I went ahead and pulled this together, just kind of a list of the addresses. I will say that I have had one or more contacts from people who are interested in these, and so I believe these are the ones that require the least amount of staff work to try and gain interest in them in order for us to be able to dispose of them. And so I'm requesting that we move forward with the sale of these six lots through a request for sealed bid process with no reserve, and that we would have a due date kind of at the end of October, and look to set some public hearings and formally go through our process in the month of November, and to close on all of them by the end of the calendar year.
Your Honor?
Discussion? Yes.
Jessica, how many other, in addition to these six, how many more are there?
I would say.
That are vacant, that are, they've been torn down.
I would say probably 10 or so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So the, the other ones, I say, are going to require some work in reaching out to neighbors and making some contact and seeing if adjacent owners are interested.
Can we publish that list to see if there's other people interested besides adjacent owners?
Yeah, yeah, we certainly can. That's the, the thing on all of this is, is there is a, you know, it's easier to know when, like these, these are easy ones where I, I am confident that we'll at least have one bidder on each of these lots, which means that the staff time that it goes in, goes into this process is not for, for nothing. And so I think that's where we want to make sure that adjacent owners are aware of things, just because they are our most likely buyers in these situations for these vacant lots.
Give me door hangers. I'd be happy to go hit the neighborhoods around the other vacant lots.
So I, I can certainly do that. So ideally, we would be able to start moving more of these.
Yes.
Here in the springtime. Initially, until the housing strategy was done, we wanted to talk about holding on to some that really would be ideal for a, a new construction home through Habitat or through Homes for Iowa or Rural Housing 360 that does have a product that is a new construction, but targeted at a lower income level. So, but I think after all the cleanup we had to do on these, it's, it's sort of, we're, we're ready to sort of give up on that, knowing that we're continually acquiring another six to 10 properties each year as part of our D and D, and that we, we just think that we can move some of these lots quickly enough that we will always have probably at least a few that fit that model for what nonprofit organizations might be looking for.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Jessica.
Let's open it up to the public.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Okay, no public comment. Is there a motion to direct staff to so proceed?
May I ask one question first?
You may.
Is there a minimum bid on any properties?
I'm not recommending it. I think that it is, it's something where I think all of these, but maybe one of them does have a competition element to it with there being two interested parties. On some of them, it's a little bit more than that, too. So I'm not recommending it, but that's something, if you certainly want to put something in, we'll, we'll add that to our documents.
Thank you.
Your Honor, but when we bring these up to the council to approve, they can change their bid at that time if they're outbid? Oh, you're going to say sealed bids, winner-take-all?
Yeah, so when, once we open those sealed bids, once that deadline is due, they cannot change it.
Okay.
I suppose somebody could come up here and try and sway you during a public hearing to, to not approve a bid, but.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. I'm getting hungry, and I've forgotten whether we had a motion and a second on this one.
No, Your Honor.
Not yet, okay. Well, I'd solicit one.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor. Go ahead, Sue.
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call a roll.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. Thank you. Let's go on to public comment item K then, and I need to read the caveat that members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the mic, state name and address, room comments of three minutes and less longer comment is authorized by yours truly. Director comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items in order to comply with the open meetings laws. Is there any public comment? Let's go ahead and unmute the line.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
That is it for the public comment, and let's go on to the next item L, which is a closed session. And so we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section 21.5 of the ABAC Code in order to discuss the purchase of real estate that would be disadvantaged if it were made public.
So moved?
Second.
I guess I should include that we have an attorney-client relationship with Roger Schell, who is here, and with Lynch Dallas that may be available by phone as well to include them in the discussion. And let's call the.